Welcome to the August 21st, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. And tonight, we have Pastor Ray giving the invocation from Vineyard Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's take a moment, pause, and reflect as we seek Almighty God's favor tonight. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we do so in service of our community with the shared goal of building a better, stronger, and more compassionate city for all. Bless our Honorable Mayor, these council members, and city officials here tonight. May they approach their responsibilities with humility and wisdom, justice, Lord, that their actions would be directed toward the common good of all who call Muscatine home, that they would listen respectfully, speak carefully, and decide thoughtfully. May your Spirit lead us into unity within our diversity, your strength and a shared commitment to honor the people we serve, and a lasting peace throughout each neighborhood. We thank you, God, for we know you hear our prayers. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Cindly, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Lampy.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Conner.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we have swearing in of three firefighters. I'll have Benjamin, Matthew, and Bergen approach the podium, please, with family members as well. So, we're gonna do Benjamin first. All right. I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Benjamin Carpenter.
I, Benjamin Carpenter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
Support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the state of Iowa.
The state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
A firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter.
Or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna have you sign right here. Right up there. Can I borrow your pen?
Yeah, go ahead.
Perfect. It's prepared. And then, what we'll do is I'll have the next one come up, and then I'll have you guys stand right there, and then we'll all go through it together, okay?
Understood.
All right. Matthew. Matthew, family, hi.
What's your name?
Lincoln.
Very good.
All right. Matthew, have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I, Matthew Hickenbottom.
I, Matthew Hickenbottom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
A firefighter.
A firefighter.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
City of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter.
Or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Have you sign right here? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. And the next one is Bergen. How are you doing? All right. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me, please? I, Bergen Prairie.
I, Bergen Prairie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
A firefighter.
A firefighter.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter.
Or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. All right. I'll have you sign right here, and then I'll have you guys walk in front of the dais, and if you wanna shake all the council members' hands and get a picture, okay? And bow.
Congratulations. Well done.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
I have an extra chair here.
Congratulations. Well done.
Where'd you go? Good luck.
You're welcome. Welcome aboard. Welcome.
Good luck to you guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Should we hold these up here, or please?
Sure.
Okay.
Nobody's gonna see that they're holding something.
And then, we'll get them all officially signed. We need to do this. Do it. We need to do that. Okay. Count of three, we'll do it double. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Now, let's do individual, so I have, can I make them up? Please.
I was gonna say, she's gonna steal the show. Aww. Future firefighter, there you go. We know who owns what, right?
We got two of them, but we're missing the other one. Congratulations, you guys.
Mayor, behind you. Look at him, he was due in the one where I had. Right, the two, right in front of the hard one. There are the two, there's two of them. That's two of them. Did your fancy pin quit working?
Nobody knows how to sign that, so.
Oh, it's the user's fault, not the pin. Okay.
I was gonna say, Lennox and Ella, if you wanna just come up here and stand right here, that'd be great. All right. Tonight, we have recognition of Little Miss Iowa 2025, Lennox Holmes, and Junior Miss Iowa 2025, Ella Hausman. So, I have a little bit of a paragraph to read about each of you. So, Little Miss I, Lil, Lil Miss Iowa, not little, but lil, right? Little Miss Iowa 2025, Lennox Holmes. Lennox is the nine-year-old daughter of Cody Holmes and Hillary Holmes. She enjoys dance and has been dancing since the age of two at River City All-Stars. She is also an active in tumbling, cheerleading, and soccer, which you have to get to soccer in a little bit, too, so I'll hurry up. Lennox will be a fourth grader at Loisa Muscatine Elementary School this fall. This was Lennox's third year competing in the state pageant, having placed first place runner-up, first runner-up last year prior to capturing the crown this year. In addition to winning the state title, Lennox earned $1,250 cash scholarship.
Nice.
Congratulations. Incredible prize package and opportunity to serve our great state this year. Congratulations. All in just a sec, after I'm done reading, then you guys can then speak, okay? All right. And next is Junior Miss Iowa 2025, Ella Hausman. Ella is the 13-year-old daughter of Jessie and Stephanie Hausman of Muscatine. She will be in the eighth grade at Saint Mary Mathias Catholic School this fall. Ella's love of dance started at the age of three, and she has been a competitive dancer for the past seven years. She also enjoys playing volleyball, running track, cheerleading, and spending time with her friends. Ella spreads awareness of her partnership with sleep and heavenly peace, ensuring all kids have a safe place to sleep. I think that's amazing. This was also Ella's second time competing for the title, having placed second runner-up last year prior to winning the Junior Miss Iowa title this year. In addition to capturing the crown and title, Ella also walked away with the Junior Miss Community Service Award, Junior Academic Achievement Award, and also the Junior Miss Top Interview Award. Wow, congratulations. In addition to capturing the state title, Ella walked away with $1,600 cash scholarships and the opportunity to serve Iowa this year. And I would like to give you this as just a token of appreciation. We are so proud of both of you. Congratulations. And if you would like to say a couple words first, and then we'll have Ella, okay? And then we'll get some pictures.
All right. Thank you for having us. I myself, I was born and raised right here in Muscatine, and I am so excited and very honored to be able to represent our city and the state of Iowa this year.
Pull the microphone down.
Pull it. There you go.
I was also born and raised in Muscatine, and I am honored to be here and be your new Little Miss Iowa and to help the community.
Very good. All right. Councilmembers, I want everybody to come up here, and we're gonna get a picture with these two. Come on, John, you're better than any of the rest of us. I think taking that out. And count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Very good. All right. And next, we have a proclamation from the governor for proclamation water and wastewater workers of Iowa. Whereas the state of Iowa's surface and groundwater are a treasured and limited natural resource, and whereas protecting and preserving those water resources requires the talent, expertise, and passion of individuals who have committed their professional careers in service to the state's residential, commercial, and industrial, and agricultural citizens, and whereas the water and wastewater workforce of Iowa have dedicated themselves to applying environmental passion and science to enhance drinking and recreational waters of Iowa. And whereas their applied environmentalism continues to be a vital element in improving the quality of life and preserving and protecting public health in our state and promoting sustainability in our way of living. And this was a proclamation from Governor Kim Reynolds of the state of Iowa for water and wastewater workers Iowa Week, which is August 17th through the 23rd of 2025. And today, we have John and Ryan gonna give a speech.
Just wanted to point out a couple things. Sanitation has been rated as the greatest medical advancement in 150 years, according to a poll from the British Medical Journal, rated it above vaccinations, antibiotics, anesthesia, and 12 other medical milestones. Started with Jon Snow, not the Game of Thrones Jon Snow, during an 1854 cholera outbreak in London, where he famously removed the handle from a public water pump to prove that cholera was not an airborne disease but waterborne. Once people stopped using that pump, the outbreak stopped. Sanitation has been so successful in the developed world that diseases like cholera, dysentery, typhoid, and polio are mostly unheard of. These diseases kill more than 500,000 people a year in the third-world countries that lack clean water to drink and proper wastewater treatment. During this year's Water and Wastewater Workers Week, please be sure to thank all those that work tirelessly to provide clean water, clean drinking water to our homes, and those that clean the dirty water that leaves our homes. They work day and night, in the hot and cold, weekends and holidays, to ensure the health of everyone in our community, and there's no one, there's no, there is no one our clean water services doesn't touch, so when you think of healthcare, be sure to include those that provide these vital services.
I want to thank John for inviting Muscatine Power &amp; Water to participate in acknowledging these hard-working folks. It's also another example of the strides the city and MPW have made in working together to make Muscatine the best it could be. Safe, clean, and reliable water plays an important role in our lives, and many thanks to our water utility workers for their dedication. They tirelessly test and sample our water, maintain our equipment, and repair those main breaks at all hours of the night. Part of keeping our system clean and working so well is the need to flush our mains. Fall flushing is scheduled for September 22nd through October 17th, and a great benefit of this work is the opportunity to test every fire hydrant and make sure it's ready in case of an emergency. Thank you for this opportunity to thank all of our water workers.
Hold on, John. He's done. All right. Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item, is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes item 10A, items 11A, 1 through 9, and B, items 12A and B, item 13A, and item 14A, with bills totaling $3,235,498.25? So moved, Conner. We have a motion by Councilmember Conner.
Second, Lampy.
Second by Lampy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with five ayes and one nay. And next, we have a public hearing. It's a public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation annual appropriation sewer improvement loan and disbursement agreement, and to borrow money thereunder in a principal amount not to exceed $5.2 million. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by Brockert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right. Next item is 17A, is resolution authorizing, approving, and approving a loan and disbursement agreement providing for the issuance of $5,115,000 general obligation annual appropriation sewer improvement bonds, Series 2025, and providing for the levy of taxes, subject to non-appropriation to pay the same. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
A second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17B, is a resolution executing a grant agreements with the Federal Aviation Administration for the design and construction of the snow removal acquisition improvements project at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second, Conner.
And a second by Conner. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Hearing none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17C, is resolution to accept completed work on the Phase 1 of the Muscatine Wayfinding Project and authorizing release of payment. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis and a second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Looks great, seeing people using it.
You bet. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17D, is a resolution executing an airport improvement grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the construction of a taxi lane to the new corporate hangar at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second, Gordon.
A second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, just a quick comment. It's really good to see, you know, continued improvements at the Muscatine Airport, you know, with the snow removal and this additional taxiway, it's good to see improvements and growth still happening at our local airport. It's good to see the companies and corporations using it, as well as private citizens, so good to see the improvements continue there.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Miles Construction LLC in the amount of $59,600 for the purchase of material and labor to resurface the old maintenance building at Weed Park. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F, is a resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation surplus and deeding over to the adjoining property owner the undeveloped right-of-way of Smalley Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council of setting this public hearing? Hearing none. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation surplus and deeding over to the adjoining property owner, the undeveloped right-of-way of Climber Street. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon, a second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council setting the public hearing? Hearing none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Miles Construction LLC in the amount of $59,600 for the purchase of material and labor to resurface the old maintenance building at Weed Park. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Looks great, seeing people using it.
You bet. Councilmember Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Lampy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17D, is a resolution executing an airport improvement grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the construction of a taxi lane to the new corporate hangar at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lampy.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lampy.
Second, Gordon.
A second by Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, just a quick comment. It's really good to see, you know, continued improvements at the Muscatine Airport, you know, with the snow removal and this additional taxiway, it's good to see improvements and growth still happening at our local airport. It's good to see the companies and corporations using it, as well as private citizens, so good to see the improvements continue there.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Councilmember Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Conner?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gendrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Miles Construction LLC in the amount of $59,600 for the purchase of material and labor to resurface the old maintenance building at Weed Park. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F is a resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation surplus and deeding over to the adjoining property owner, the under, the undeveloped right-of-way of Smalley Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved Louis.
We have a motion by council member Louis.
Second, Lampy.
And a second by Lampy. Is there any discussion with the public or council of setting this public hearing? Here are none, council member Gendrich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
And Lampy.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is a resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation surplus and deeding over to the adjoining property owner, the undeveloped right-of-way of Clymer Street. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon, a second by Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public or council setting the public hearing? Here are none, council member Lampy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Louis.
Aye.
Connerd.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
And Gendrich.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is H is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Miles Construction LLC in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars for the purchase of material and labor to resurface the old maintenance building at Weed Park. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by council member Brockert.
Second, Louis.
A second by Louis, is there any discussion with council? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is I is a request to approve entering into an agreement with the Iowa DOT accepting state transit assistance for fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second, Connerd.
A second by Connerd, is there any discussion with council? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is J is a request to approve a sub-recipient agreement with MCSA providing seventy-five thousand dollars to CDBG funding for shelter operations. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved Gordon.
We have a motion by council member Gordon.
Second, Connerd.
A second by Connerd, is there any discussion with council?
I just.
Yep, council member Louis.
Uh, this is, it's not that we're taking any money out of our general fund, this is actually a grant, is that correct? I'm getting a head shake from our, um, community development person. So we are just basically the banker, the money's going through us and to them, thank you. Thanks for clarification.
Any other comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is seventeen K is a request to approve change order number one for the Mulberry Avenue sidewalk reconstruction project in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Connerd.
We have a motion by council member Connerd.
Second, Louis.
A second by Louis, is there any discussion with council? Yes, council member Gordon.
Thank you, I just wanna say how good the sidewalks look. Uh, going, you know, from around Fifth, Sixth Street up to Jefferson School, they look great. Can't wait to see the murals and things like that, so, great job. And thanks for the vitality grant for doing this kind of stuff.
Any other comments? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Council member Gendrich, anything you'd like to share tonight?
No, Mayor, I'm exhausted.
Council member Brockert?
Yes. The skyline is changing in the Fourth Ward, and I couldn't be more excited about it. Our dome is finally taking shape, it's gone from a dream to a reality. And I'm excited. I don't know about the rest of you, but let's go.
Kind of excited.
Very exciting. Nothing to that.
Council member Connerd, council member Louis?
Uh, the only thing I want people to be aware of is, uh, make sure when you're mowing, make sure you don't throw your, your, um, grass into the, to the street. I'm seeing an awful lot of that around the neighborhood, and especially with our sewer system, we don't wanna plug it up. So just be cautious. Thank you.
Council member Gordon?
Um, I just wanna mention, I've just been watching like the National Pearl Button Museum and the Arts Center. They have a lot of great opportunities for art lessons, single day, one activity for families and adults. Follow them and see if there's something you're interested in and, and go and visit them. They're doing a great job. That's it.
Council member Lampy?
I was waiting for you to. Yes, I'd also like to, to congratulate all the hard work that's been going on around the, uh, the Sports Dome and, and stuff. It's great to see, uh, the excitement around there, uh, the, and the number of events that have already been booked into that is really exciting. So I think this is something that Muscatine should be very proud of as well. Um, I also was fortunate enough to attend the Susan Clark, uh, nude gymnasium cutting, ribbon cutting. That was, again, if you haven't had a chance to tour that facility, please go, it is impressive, uh, gym facility and stuff. So job well done by the Muscatine School District and stuff and getting that thing up and going as well, so. Job well done on that, so, that's all I got.
Send up. Chief.
Nothing to that, Mayor.
City administrator?
I have one thing, um, just hats off to the Park and Rec Department uh, for everything they're doing to getting this dome, they have spent a lot of hours. Just so everybody is aware, the dome was inflated today. It will be a little bit deflated this evening into tomorrow to remove some water, and then they'll continue to inflate it back tomorrow. So don't panic, uh, if anybody's watching at home, if they're watching that tomorrow and it goes down a little bit, it's planned. But if it doesn't go up by the end of the day, then we may have some issues, but I believe it, it should be fine. Hats off to those folks for getting that project. Lot of work to be done on the inside yet, they're, they're working on it and doing some stuff this evening, so that's why Park and Rec isn't here. But they are, um, I think they're up to twenty-nine events booked already into next year, so they've, they've got some really good numbers on the update. A lot of things to be done on the inside yet, but we will keep plugging away, get it ready.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Well said. And I only have one thing, so, um, I was kinda thinking more and more about council meetings, and just an idea to throw out there. So typically we've had council meetings on Thursdays, and I wanted to see what council, and then, uh, city administrator, if you wanna talk to staff during leadership, if we were to potentially look at moving council meetings to Tuesday nights, only because from a, from a staff perspective, um, I think there'd be benefits of going on long, you know, a little bit longer weekend getaways, things like that. So this is just something that a couple of us have been talking about, and just wanted to throw that out there as, just think about it, and we can, um, talk about it probably next visit, and I'm guessing, you know, when could this start? Could start this year, it could start next year, whatever you're thinking, whatever council's thinking, but, just wanna throw that out to, out there to everybody, everybody, so, alrighty? Perfect. Now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.